To the Republic, for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Gendron?
Here.
Mr. Gignac?
Here.
Mr. Hoi?
Here.
Mayor Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled school committee meeting of Wednesday, August 17th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve and accept, to accept and place on file by, by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Gignac? Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, we have permission to enter. We have three items. The first item is the Deputy Superintendent of Schools, Jeanne Durkin's contract approval. Do we have a motion to approve? We have a motion to approve by Mr. Gendron, seconded by, by Ms. Doherty. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
The next item is the interim Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Assessment, Robin Desmond. We have contract approval. Do we have a motion to approve? By Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, we have permission to enter for September 7th, 2016. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac? Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next, under public participation, we have one speaker, Jonathan Richmond, to speak about issues of governance facing the Lowell School Committee. Mr. Richmond?
Your Honor, I'm Jonathan Richmond.
Up the hierarchy as well as put complaints in writing. I've done both. My concerns have been shamefully ignored, and I'm coming to you today to ask you to clean up your act. The head of school failed to respond to many communications from both myself and Sim D., a key team member, as well as distinguished Lowell High School graduate. The head vetoed our program after it had been approved by his senior administrators, Amy McCloy and David Robinson. Concerned at his improper behavior, I filed a formal written complaint with the superintendent on March 16th, as required by your regulations. The superintendent is required by school district regulations to investigate and respond. He never replied. Why not? Instead, the superintendent illegally blocked my appearance at this public comment session twice. Why did he do this? Your Honor kindly arranged for Sim D. and myself to meet the superintendent May 23rd. We outlined our program, expressed concern at the barriers we faced, and asked the superintendent to address these and respond. However, a May 25 letter signed by Jeanne Durkin failed to address any of our concerns, but merely stated the school district did not want to work with us because it already had adequate partnerships in our area. This is untrue. The same day, I complained about this unacceptable response in writing to your honor stating, "I am struck with the conclusion that there has been unprofessional protection of turf and favoritism that has led to an exclusion of our extraordinary program." In response to secondhand information that the superintendent was claiming our program was not concrete or ready for operation, I complained to him on June 3rd, also in writing. I pointed out I had supplied our detailed 15-page program proposal, and we were ready to get going. Separately, I also submitted a written complaint to the school committee on that date. Neither the superintendent nor the school committee responded in violation of school district procedures. Why not? I wrote to the superintendent June 16th to ask him if anyone at the school district or school had deliberately blocked receipt of my email, as it was not being delivered to any K-12 address. He did not reply. I asked your honor twice to follow up on this issue, and you have not replied either. Why not? Most disturbingly, your honor informed me the reason the head gave you for declining our program was because a Lowell High School alum, Ellen Collins, was already mentoring a tiny number of students. We don't know about her qualifications or performance. Why was she accepted so readily while our program was thrown out? But our program offers a quite different concept as well as far greater capacity and financial resources. Supposedly protecting her in this way is a further illustration of the head of school's cronyism. The head accused me in the press of misrepresenting relationships with others. I did no such thing. There have been further distortions here, also about protection of turf. When I appeared before the school committee June 15th, I asked you to investigate the misconduct of the headmaster and superintendent. I've received no response. You appear to have merely absorbed lies and misrepresentations from them, behaving with a lack of respect of governance principles that demand fair and impartial investigation. I now ask you to conduct a full inquiry into my complaints, with which I am happy to cooperate and to respond as you are required to do on each of these issues. I have made very serious allegations of misconduct. If you ignore them, you're as guilty of corruption as the subjects of my complaints. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richmond. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move on to motions. We have a motion by Mr. Hoi. Respectfully request the superintendent or designated to report on all human resources, resource ops initiatives since July 2015. Seconded by Mr. Gendron, Mr. Hoi.
Thank you. I just want to get a, a report of all the different initiatives that Human Resources have, so I, I know I can get updated on it. To make sure the policies and everything is up to snuff, that's all. So, thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion, all opposed, so voted. Moving on to subcommittee reports. Under facilities, we have the approval of the minutes of the meeting of Thursday, August 11th, 2016. Mr. Gendron, did you want to speak on that report?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I reported on this subcommittee meeting in the last meeting, so I think we'll just accept the minutes as a report of progress.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept it as a report of progress?
So will.
By Mr. Gendron, seconded by, by Mr. Dakota. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next is the, the finance subcommittee. A report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Wednesday, August 17th, 2016. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The finance subcommittee met on Wednesday, August 17th. Those present were myself, Ms. Doherty, and Mr. Gendron of the subcommittee, along with Mr. Dakota, Ms. Martin, and Mr. Hoi. School department personnel was Dr. Salak Hafawi and Gary Frisch, the school business administrator. At this meeting, we discussed three agenda items. FY 2016 year-end financial report, independent audit schedule, and an FY 2017 year-to-date financial report. Mr. Frisch gave us an update on the 26-year end and informed us on the issue regarding the kindergarten grant and how we were going to address that issue. Since it wasn't specifically on the agenda, at the subcommittee, we discussed it with the full body. As a result of the year-end financial report, a motion was made for the school business administrator to make a recommendation to the finance subcommittee regarding transfers. This motion was made by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Doherty. That motion was made in response to some questions regarding when transfers are required to be brought forward to the full school committee and when they are not. There was a lengthy discussion on practices, and we asked Mr. Frisch to come up with a recommendation to the finance subcommittee. At this time, I'll bring forward that motion to the body. I'll make the motion.
So if, if there's no objection, we have a motion from the subcommittee, and the motion was, uh, to make a recommendation to the finance subcommittee regarding transfers of Mr. Gendron?
Yep.
What, transfers?
That's it.
You want to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a second on the motion by Mr. Gendron? Discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Is there a second motion, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, next, we discuss the independent audit schedule. Mr. Frisch gave us an update from Powers and Sullivan, who have been out in July to audit our SPED and Title I grants. They're expected to come back out in October to review the remainder of the accounts. The subcommittee asked if SPED and Title I are always looked at first. Mr. Frisch responded yes. At the last item on the agenda was the FY 17 year-to-date financial report. Mr. Frisch gave us a summary of all the accounts through, I believe it was just a few days before the meeting. As a result of that report, a motion was made to develop a timeline regarding year-end surplus projections annually. That motion was made by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Gendron. That motion was made relative to having the school administration project what the surplus is going to be earlier in the, in the year to allow the school committee to allocate those funds. And I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, so that motion is to develop a timeline regarding the year-end surplus projections annually?
Correct.
And that motion, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion on that motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. And then the chair would entertain a motion to accept the report as a report of progress?
Yep.
From the subcommittee, by Mr. Hoi, seconded by Mr. Gignac. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. And the Lowell High Subcommittee has a report and approval of the minutes of the meeting of Monday, August 29th, 2016. And that's, Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Lowell High School Subcommittee met on August 29th. The Subcommittee was, the entire Subcommittee was present, myself, Mr. Dakota, and Mr. Hoi. Ms. Martin was also present from the school department, interim Assistant Superintendent Desmond, as well as Deputy Superintendent Durkin, head of school, Martin, and Director of Curriculum, Amy McLeod, along with a number of other high school administrators. The items on the agenda for the Subcommittee were in response to motions brought forward by Mayor Kennedy. The first motion was request superintendent Lowell High School provide a report regarding the number of Lowell High graduates that have gone on to a four-year college and two-year college. The high school gave us a report regarding where they stand amongst gateway cities. We have another report later on in tonight's agenda, so I'll, I'll wait to discuss that later on. Motion to request the, uh, yeah, there was no motion as a result of that. I did relay the message from yourself, Mr. Mayor, to, to include surrounding towns into that report, and I believe that's the response we have later on tonight. We also reviewed the, another motion by yourself, Mr. Mayor, request superintendent or Lowell High School headmaster provide an update on progress being made by the STEM Steering Committee in establishing a STEM curriculum. Ms. McLeod and her department heads gave us a presentation on the different areas of STEM that are being addressed at the high school and the creation of different pathways, as well as the, the creation of a number of rather innovative courses that are going to be offered this year that haven't been offered in the past. There was no motion as a result of that report. The next motion we discussed was a request superintendent in the high school assess the curriculum and course office offerings at Lowell High as it relates to a new high school facility. Mr. Martin spoke regarding this, and this is really going to take place with the owner's project manager and the architect over the next few months. They're going to be meeting heavily with the high school, the curriculum office, the finance office, and community members to really make sure our high school is, has a 21st century learning community and that we're equipping the students what they need to succeed. There was an emotion as a result of that report. Motion number four discussed was requesting the superintendent in high school provide a report to address the issues regarding suspensions and expulsions cited in the 2014-2015 Student Discipline Data Report. The report should include an analysis of why certain suspensions or expulsions are so high at Lowell High School and what actions are being taken. The head of school provided us with an analysis on the suspensions and expulsions, along with Assistant Superintendent, sorry, Deputy Superintendent Durkin. They provided us a number of, of different points of data regarding the high school as it relates to a number of different gateway cities and the, the breakdown of, of discipline actions with the student groups. Ms. Lang, the director of the freshman academy, gave a report on a PBIS program that is running in the freshman academy that is now being rolled out in the full building. That's something that we could, we could probably report on to the full committee down the road. I think it's, it's, it's an interesting model that has been very successful. There's also a program that is fairly new, partners in achievement of Lowell students, a PALS program at Lowell High School, which was presented to the Subcommittee, which is a really great program to align students with different mentors, internships, externships, and really prepares them for the workforce. And they gave a rather interesting presentation, and that's another thing I'd like to see brought forward to the full committee for a presentation. I think they, they're doing a lot of good things in, in this area at the high school. A motion was made to simply accept this report as a report of progress. At this time, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Discussion, all in favor? Ms. Doherty, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do want to accept the report as a report of progress, but I think there was so much that happened at that Subcommittee meeting, and there's just a couple of things I wanted to comment and ask questions about. Would this be appropriate to do that now?
Sure.
Okay, so in terms of the, the graduation rates, I thought it was very encouraging to see that when you combined our two-year and four, our students going to two-year and four-year schools, that we consistently performed in, I think it was in fourth place with all the other urban districts that we were compared to. Obviously, when we compare ourselves to, you know, wealthier communities like Westford, we didn't do as well. I think we fell in like 11th or 12th place out of 17 nearby communities. The thing that struck me, and there was a lot of charts and data, and I, I don't remember exactly what page it was on, but in terms of my notes, I think it's important to think about that when we looked at, I think it was in 2012, the private versus the public school attendance for four-year schools, right? When we looked at how we compare with urban districts, you could say, okay, a school, a, a district like Cambridge is going to have more students going to the private four-year schools, right? Just the mentality of being in Cambridge, MIT, Harvard, than Lowell. But why would Chelsea, why would Chelsea have more students going to private four-year stu, schools than we do? Now, it's just one data point. I know it's, you can make all kinds of extrapolations about data and get completely different decisions. But for me, I think the question is to look at, do we, as, as a district, at the high school, our guidance and career councils, do we have a tendency to advise our students to go to the less expensive schools? Because we have nothing against UMass Lowell, it's fantastic. We have UMass Lowell down the street. We have Middlesex Community College, you know, probably the best community college and state schools we have in Massachusetts. And that's saying a lot, because Massachusetts has very good public schools, public universities. But my question is to be looking at those top-tier Lowell High students, why couldn't they apply to a private school? And even if they don't have the finances, because they're exceptional students, get the financial aid. So that was just one data point that jumped out at me, like, if we just excuse that most of our kids will go to two-year or four-year, most will go to public institutions because of the economics, then why does Chelsea? Why are Chelsea students going to more pri, private four-year schools? I think it's something we want to look at, at the high school, in terms of encouraging our top-tier students to really go for the gold. Go for that Ivy League school or the, the private school that's got the name with the recognition. So that was just one thing. And, and I think overall, the data was very encouraging. I think it was something like 80%, which were, you know, combining two, in four-year. 80% of our kids are going on to college, and that was right about at the state average, so I think that looked good. In terms of the issue regarding the opiate task force, we didn't get to that yet, right? Okay, so you didn't, we didn't talk about that at the Subcommittee. The other issue was the suspension rates. I think what, what I think is difficult in looking at that data is we don't have enough good information when we're comparing ourselves with the state. And I, I, my sense is that there's going to be, going forward, a real concerted effort to get that data and track it closely so that we have a better explanation for why this is happening. But one takeaway that was very positive about that data was looking at the trends. And the trends have been consistently, our dropout rates are going down, our suspensions are going down. So we are moving in the right direction in that the, you know, we were flagged with a number of other communities about this being an issue. Okay, fine. Obviously, we're already dealing with it, so I look forward to getting more information as we do a better job of tracking that. I'm sorry, that's all.
That's okay. Anybody else? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to respond to Ms. Doherty, in regards to the discipline, I think the high school gave a, a good presentation on how they're tracking data better than they ever have before. So the second there's an issue with the kid, it goes into the system, and everybody on the system knows that there's an issue. And that's something that hasn't been the case, or it has, hasn't been as consistent as it has been. And what's important is, is when the kids come from the middle schools, whether it's our middle schools or another middle school, a private school or out of district, that that information is shared with the high school, so they have a knowledge on the background of the child. And, and here, here in Lowell, we have, we have tremendous wraparound services with social workers, school psychologists that some districts don't have. So when they are coming here, we basically have a, a triage team that can address the issue and make sure that their school day isn't impacted. And they have a pretty good system there, and they give a, a very good presentation on how they, they address each and every kid individually on their discipline and make sure it's not just a, okay, this kid's trouble, let's get him out of here. It's, let's help the kid get through his, 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 um, his school career and see what we can do to make him a better citizen. And I think that was pretty powerful in the meeting.
Any, Ms., Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, since we're talking about the high school report, I did also want to chime in with a, a comment regarding the, the attendance rate at college. I thought 83.6% attending college or other post-secondary was, was, was very high. I was, I'm happy with that level. Obviously, we want to strive for more. But it's above the state average. Yes, our, our students do tend to attend two-year colleges or state colleges at a higher rate than the rest of the state, but there's the obvious economic reasoning for that. So I think it's a, it's, you know, a data point that shows us that we're doing a lot of good things at the high school, that nearly 85% of our students are going on to college or some, some other post-secondary pursuit. And in a city like Lowell, where we have, you know, we have to deal with all kinds of immigrants and refugees and kids from all different backgrounds, I think it's, it's an excellent report to see that we stand out in the state as a, as one of the top urban communities when it comes to attendance in college. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
If I could just make a comment on the expulsion rate. The idea was not to find out what the high school does now about the expulsion rate. Lowell High was on the list for having a high expulsion rate, so the, the intent of the motion was to find out what steps they're taking to make sure that we're not on the next list. That, to me, is the issue. You, I mean, you're on the list, you're on the list. It's, that isn't such a big deal, but if you're on the list all the time, it is a big deal. So that was the intent of, of that particular motion. As far as the graduates and the two-year and four-year graduates, that really was not aimed at the top tier. It's aimed more at the rest of the kids that aren't on the top tier. You know, what are we doing for them? Are we doing enough for them, and, and could we be doing better? And I only put that motion in because the superintendent had mentioned in a public forum that he thought that the, the amount of, the percentage of kids that go to a four- or two-year college was low and was somewhat disappointing compared to what he thought it would be. So that, that was the intent of the motion. So I guess, even with that one, it's, it's, the idea would be, how can we improve? Not just to pat the high school on the back and saying they're doing a good job. It's a little bit more than that.
Yes, Mr. Durkin?
We have a full intention of reporting our progress as we go. We immediately met the day after this data came out. And what you don't see in this report is each of those individual children that are represented in the state report, you could find pages upon pages of interventions that are done to support those children. Now, can we do better? Absolutely. And that's what we're looking at, and that's why we're going to join in part of the, the state's group to assess and look at. And we'll be able to be able to give you more information about how we really do compare when we look at the strategies that are already in place and what additionally we need to do. Just this morning, I was meeting with the, the district support team, and I'm meeting with the high school on Friday to talk about some other opportunities potentially to reach out to students who are really struggling. So we don't view this as we're on the list and we're patting ourselves on the back for, for the progress, because we have, there have been substantial gains over the last three years. However, we know that we can do better by every child, and we won't stop till we do.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Chair would entertain a motion we sent as a report of progress. We have a motion to that effect from Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Next, under reports of the superintendent, we have several. The first report is Lowell High School graduates attending college. Any discussion on that report? Mr. Superintendent? Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for providing this information. I think this would have been helpful at the Subcommittee meeting. And I was, I was kind of confused why we received two different reports, one from Central Office and one from the high school. But if you could coordinate a, a joint presentation on these, these figures, that would be helpful, and just make sure everybody's on the same page. One of the questions I had in regards to the, the two-year college, our dual enrollment offerings has increased dramatically over the three to five years, maybe even going six or seven. And I wonder if that's a part of why our two-year college percentage is increasing so much, because we're offering so much dual enrollment. So when the kids graduating Lowell High, they're already going to Middlesex Community College. Why not finish out their associate? So I wonder if that, if that factors into this. So it'll be interesting to, to listen to the players. Thank you. Great. Right. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more comment on the Middlesex Community College, two-year college attendance. I know Middlesex has a terrific program that allows you to go there for two years and then transfer to another state university for four-year college. I, I don't know if that's, you know, are those, those kids who are going there, you know, for whatever reason, maybe, you know, you couldn't get into the four-year college, or maybe you don't have the finances to get in, it's a really economical way to get a four-year degree. I know a lot of kids do that, and I suspect that the numbers don't show that. They probably show all those kids who are planning to go to four years, but apply first to Middlesex Community College as a two-year college student. So maybe that's another thing we can clarify.
Thank you. Let's try this one. Is this better?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. This one wasn't working. So I was saying that, what I was saying is that the, um, one of the things that we're going to try to utilize the tools acquired to try to understand, uh, and then, and follow up this alumni and to say, those who went to college, how many of them actually ended up saying going from two to four? And how many ended up going, you know, how many ended up graduating and things like that? So that's why I think this is really, uh, an opportunity for us to dive into further and, and come back with a, a better, more thorough presentation.
Okay, uh, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having been at the high school recently and spent a lot of time with kids who were applying to colleges and so forth, I know that a lot of them have this mentality that, uh, and parents are supporting this, that go to a state school where it doesn't cost as much to get your baccalaureate degree. And then if you want to go to an Ivy League school to get your master's, that's where you can really spend some quality dollars. And I think a lot of people look at it that way. So I think the, the state schools provide that opportunity to, to these students and families and not burden, burdening them with the huge fin, financial commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, moving on to the, to item thirteen as a response to Mr. Gignac's motion of July twentieth regarding opiate abuse prevention and awareness efforts for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion on that matter? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could just get a report on, on the rest of the schools, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I can speak to that. Actually, uh, the, actually today, the University of Massachusetts Lowell provided us with, um, our feasibility, our study results. Um, we have a meeting planned with, uh, the university tomorrow to review a very dense document, which I'll share with you. It, it literally came right before today's meeting. Um, and also, uh, meeting with, with them, we're meeting with Healthy Futures, and we're also meeting with, um, the Health Department to put together a plan for the curriculum piece of it, and then we can share the other opportunities that are planned.
Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank your honor, through you, I have a question about the, um, substance abuse workshop series that they run at the high school. What I saw in the report says a hundred students participate. Is that, like, can you explain why it's only a hundred students? It seems like it would be a great program to have these guest speakers talking.
I would have to get that information, um, for you from Mr. Martin. I certainly will get that.
Okay. Cause the other side of that, could they perhaps videotape those speakers? And then, you know, maybe Mr. Gignac knows he's got to say that.
I'm not sure if it came up.
Just share it with a larger number of, uh, community members at the high school. That would be my interest.
Now, I do know that I can speak to one specific incident that I was present at, that that's exactly what they did. They brought in one class of students and they videotaped it and shared it with the whole entire school. Just because of the large size of our student body at the high school, they're not able to bring everybody together under one roof, but that's what they have done in the past. I've witnessed it firsthand, and I know that they did that at last year as well. But I can get specifically the, the specific program that it's alluding to about the hundred students that participated for you.
Because that's a series of speakers that come in. So that, yes, that'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Gignac?
Yeah, I can answer that que, that was, I asked the question offline, cause this wasn't on the agenda for the high school subcommittee, um, but it was, it was brought to us, um, after the agenda had been posted. But the hundred students are all in the same, uh, they're all in health class. So these, this workshop series is, is occurring during their health class, during that period. Um, so the intention was, uh, the opiate education drug awareness is, is built in somewhat into the health curriculum. So this was the easiest way to roll this part of it out.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Oh, and this, if not, we'll move on to item fourteen in response to Mayor Kennedy's motion of July twentieth regarding the STEM curriculum at Lowell High School. Is there any discussion on item fourteen? If not, we'll move on to item fifteen, response to Mayor Kennedy's motion of July twentieth regarding Lowell High School current curriculum and course offerings and a new high scho, and the new high school facility. Any discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to item sixteen, a comparison of previous salary structure to the new structure for professional development. Any discussion on item sixteen? The next report was the elementary and middle school enrollment report for two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion on item seventeen? Item eighteen was, uh, bullying prevention and intervention plan revisions. Any discussion on this? This requires a, uh, a motion to approve the revisions. Do, do we have a motion of that effect?
I just had a couple of questions. I don't know if Assistant Superintendent Durkin would like to speak first, or, okay.
You can ask the question and I'll, I can, all right.
I can answer the question and you're speaking, so why don't you say what you were going to say.
Okay, so, um, these changes, we, uh, we meet, um, actually twice a year to review the bullying and intervention plan. Um, there are changes that are in the plan aligned to revisions in the actual laws relative to bullying and also to, uh, gender identity, uh, the, the recent legislation that was passed this past year. Um, we also included, when we took some time this year to really look through it, there were just some, some items that might have said something like it, or they, or them, and I felt that it really needed clarification. What is the it that we're referring to as the bullying intervention plan? Um, additionally, um, there were some curriculum updates, um, from our schools. We hadn't reviewed that portion, so we got confirmation from our schools, and you'll see the updated, um, curricula that are being used in each of the schools. And, um, lastly, the other piece that was added to support our families and our staff in, uh, reporting these incidents and also investigating the incidents, um, we, we worked with staff in each of the schools this past year to look at our investigation form, looked at the state documents, made sure we were aligned with them, and then we made, um, these forms, which you can't see, and I wish you could, um, has a list of dropdown menus. So when a staff member clicks on it, it gives them ideas on how to intervene for students, um, what supports could, they could put in place. So, um, we're initiating that for the first time this year as well. And these, with your vote, will be put online for families to actually, um, submit their data, uh, to schools online if they have any concerns relative to bullying.
Thank you. And actually, it didn't address my question, so. And, um, I guess I just want to open it up for thoughts and discussion. Maybe you can give me some reasoning behind what I thought some of the, uh, language, or I'm just going to go right to it. So when you talk in the, in the, uh, form about that, uh, incidents of bullying must be documented within seventy-two hours, which is three days, that seems like a long period of time for me.
Where, what page you, are you referring to?
Oh, I didn't.
Um, so what, because there are separate, it's just the documentation of it, the actual writing, it's not the reporting of it. So it means that to my office, getting information out, so it's not that they're waiting seventy-two hours. There's actual, uh, a reporting directly to the families, to the students, uh, to the students of the families, e, as soon as possible, as soon as the investigation takes place.
Okay, so I don't know, I don't know exactly where that was.
Okay.
So maybe that clarification could be in the language that
Sure.
You're talking about the, just the documentation piece, not the actions or, you know.
Correct.
Because to me, three da, three days is a long time.
Absolutely.
And then at another point, when you discuss notifying parents
Mm-hmm.
Of an incident of bullying, the word promptly
Mm-hmm.
Is used. And in fact, uh, you don't clearly indicate when the principal needs to no, just, um, notify the district, which would be your office. Uh, so just looking for some clarification around those timelines and, and, or if you feel that's not necessary, I'd be open to hearing your comment to that. What do you mean by the parents will be notified promptly? And, and, and when you say the principal must notify, uh, central office, uh, district administration, which I believe would be your office.
That's correct.
Um, there wasn't any timeframe mentioned of when central office needs to be notified of an incident. And I realize that some incidents, you know, like a, you know, a first grader pushing another first grader, you know, there's levels of severity.
Mm-hmm.
And, and maybe that language could be added in there. And I, I don't mean to, I mean, a lot of work has been put into this, and I
Right.
Think we are ver, we've got a very good policy here. I love the idea that it's going to be online, everybody can see it, and, but those were just things that jumped out to me that I thought would benefit for some, from some clarification.
So, um, some of the incidents need, um, when you get a bullying inter, uh, report, um, they might need to investigate it. So they don't necessarily, um, start notifying my office until they look into it and find out all the information, um, and gather the correct information. Then they will notify, um, my office, they notify, they'll notify the superintendent and my office. And, um, then they also follow that up with a actual written report. The written report is, um, provided whether the bullying is substantiated or not. So if I get a report that a child has been picking on someone else and it's been ongoing, um, and they do a full investigation and we find out that they used to like one another and now they're, you know, now they're, they're not this boyfriend and girlfriend anymore, and so it's, it's, it's not substantiated bullying, then the principal or the assistant, whoever's filling the report, would, would submit that to me and say unfounded with all of the investigations attached. I review every single one, and they can attest to that, and I send them back with questions about if this substantiated, is there a safety plan in place? Also, part of this new plan was that we built in a template for schools to develop that safety plan, so that we have a consistent, uh, mode of thinking about how do we provide students with a safe environment if there has in fact been bullying, in order to prevent it from ever happening again. If you'd like, I'd be happy to, uh, go back, um, and, uh, clarify the words promptly, um, and talk with our district leaders and our, uh, staff council to do that, and, um, I'd be happy to do that.
I'm wondering if anybody else had any thoughts on that, or, I mean.
Alex.
Okay, so it would make sense if you could do some clarification. I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, well.
Doesn't seem like anybody's objecting to it.
No.
And then even with the, with the three days to indicate that that's not the action
The seventy-two hours piece.
That the documentation will be in place within seventy-two hours. And, um, in terms of when the principal notifies the district, I don't know if you want any clarification around that, but to me, there was no timeline at all mentioned. So those would be the three areas that jumped out at me.
Will do.
Is there any further discussion? All right, so the motion would be to approve the revisions, but, um, would you prefer an alternative motion to refer it back to the superintendent so that those, um, changes can be made and then it comes back at the next meeting?
Is that going to cause a huge problem to?
I have, it, it, it is posted online, not this document, our old document is posted online with the old forms that aren't as easily accessible, but they are posted. It is not a problem for me to go back and, um, articulate those, that clarification. I'm wonder, you know, if, I don't have a problem doing that. We, we have a policy in place, and the policy we have stands.
And we could review it at our very next meeting.
Absolutely.
You want to make that motion?
I would make that motion, then.
Do we have a second to the motion to refer it back?
I'll, I'll second the motion, and I'd like to make a comment if I could. Uh, I, I would, you know, suggest if it's okay with you, um, Ms. Doherty, that we approve the revisions and add on to that, ask, um, the superintendent to make modifications to clarify the timelines that you, that you, is that, is that okay?
Yeah. All right, so let's just have the, the motion be that.
Approve the, approve the, um, the changes and ask the superintendent to further clarify the timeframes.
Okay. No objection to that from anybody? All right, discussion on that motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted. The next item under the superintendent's reports is the DESE notification of Lowell High School disproportionate suspension data. Any discussion on that report? Here we go, and we'll move on to, uh, number twenty, which is a response to Mayor Kennedy's motion of July twentieth regarding the DESE data report on Lowell High School suspension and expulsions. I take it there's no discussion on that. So we'll move on to twenty-one, which is the, uh, Raptor system. Any discussion on the Raptor system? Mr. Gignac?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, um, thank the school district for implementing this. This is actually the, the exact system I tried to get the district to jump on a number of years ago. And at the time, it was too expensive, so I'm glad to see that we're on board. I think it's a, it's a great safety measure for our schools. And I will tell you that, uh, I visited some schools on opening day and Superintendent Calhoun used the system and there were no red flags. Um, so that was, that was good to see. Um, uh, but I am excited to see the system in place. Thank you.
Any further discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to item number twenty-two, which is the Lowell Public Schools opening day. Any discussion on that report? Okay, and, and the, uh, so the chair would entertain, at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to accept, uh, the reports from the superintendent, items number, um, items number twelve through twenty-two, um, to accept, set them in place on file. We have a motion from Mr. Houghey to do that, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion on the motion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. The last item under, uh, superintendent reports requires a roll call, and that's for home edu, uh, home education. Any discussion? We have a motion to appro, to approve the home education by Ms. Doherty, seconded by, uh, Mr. Dakota. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Moving on to new business, item number twenty-four is permission to post the PALS program head coach. Uh, do we have a motion to approve by, by Mr. Gendron, seconded by Ms. Doherty? Discussion? Mr. Gendron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask through you to the superintendent to just give us a quick explanation of the PALS program, um, and what, uh, you know, how this is funded and so forth.
I will ask our deputy superintendent.
I can try, I can try to give you some information. Mr. Gignac can probably provide some as well, because this was part of the, um, subcommittee that was reported out. Uh, the PALS program is, I believe they have funding from, uh, the university. They also, um, have mentors in place from the university as well. It's a program designed to, uh, provide outreach to students who, um, may be having some struggles, you know, um, staying in school and, um, staying on track, thinking, focusing on a career in college. And it's designed to provide them with mentors to, and, and potentially internships. They're trying to build additional internships this year, um, to, uh, support students. And they've had some really great success over the course of the past two years with this program. And I believe with the support of the university, they're going to be able to expand it.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Oh, that's a roll call? I'm sorry, uh, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Moving on to item twenty-five is permission to post preschool expansion grant, uh, data manager position. Do we have a motion to approve by Mr. Houghey, seconded by Mr. Dakota? Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
The next item is a permission to post the PALS program assistant head coach. Um, do we have a motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Houghey? Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Next item, 27, is approval of a, of a study proposal. Do we have a motion to approve?
Approve.
Mr. Hoey. Motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Under communications, we have a thank you note from retired Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Claire Abrams. We have motion to accept the communication, place it on file by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Discussion, all in favor, all opposed, so voted. Under professional personal, we have the five members of United Teachers of Lowell, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby request to donate 52 sick leave days to Kimberly Bradley of the Pine Arts, Pine Arts School teacher. Do we have a motion to approve? Motion to approve by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Gendron. Discussion on the motion, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Gendron?
Yes.
Mr. Gignac?
Yes.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes.
Mayor Kennedy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Decodo?
Yes.
Six shades, one absent, approved.
Mr. Gendron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could just have a quick moment of personal privilege, I feel compelled tonight to congratulate Ms. Durkin on her new role as Deputy Superintendent. I think this is well deserved. I've had the unique, unique ability to see you both as a parent and as a member of this school committee, starting way back in the freshman academy. I think your work ethic and dedication is incredible. It's not a nine-to-five job, as you know, we expect a lot, and I think you, you're a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week type of, type of person, so we look forward to working with that. And you also bring that institutional knowledge, I think, to, to the leadership of the district that I think is very valuable. And I also want to welcome Ms. Desmond. You know, you have a long history of excellence in Lowell Public Schools, most recently at the Maury School as principal, and, you know, I think there's probably a lot of people at the Maury that aren't too happy with your departure. But I for one want to say that I'm very happy to see you here. I think this gives you an opportunity to have a much greater impact on the district and all schools, including the Maury. So, welcome, and we look forward to working with you as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn? We have motion to adjourn by Mr. Gignac, seconded by Mr. Hoey. Are you all in favor of the motion? All opposed? Stand adjourned at 7:27. And no executive session.